Next, Council Derby, you're up.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. So what we have here is we have a bicycle ordinance that has been continued from August 1st into history now. And so basically, the origin of this, I'll give a little history here. When I first came on the council nine years ago, I saw the bike ordinances and said, "These are crazy." And it was one of my missions to eventually go through and try to make these a little bit more agreeable to the cyclist. And I never really had the opportunity until we had a petitioner come forward and ask us to take a look at their ordinances and bring them more in line with state law. And so that's exactly what the ordinance subcommittee did. We worked over multiple meetings. We conferred with multiple experts, and the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee being one, and some others that came and joined. And we wordsmithed and pored over these ordinances and found that there were some that we felt needed to stay, and we found that there were some that we could strike and allow state law to be the guiding force for the local enforcement authority, the police. And so what you have in front of you right now is the product of those meetings, and basically a compromise between the petitioner and the ordinance subcommittee on making the wording and the regulations in East Hampton friendly to the cyclist, and yet, you know, preserving safety and making sure that everybody's interests and needs were attended to. So that's my little introduction to this. One of the things that I wanted to let people know before we went forward was, I did receive a letter from Bruce McManus, the police chief, and I didn't have time to get everybody a copy of this letter. So I don't know if now would be an appropriate time or after we open it to public speak, but I just wanted to give you his endorsement. So I'll just read this, it's brief. Salem, I reviewed the draft version of the proposed bicycle ordinance for the city and support the document. As I have stated to you in the past, a city ordinance is more specific to our needs as opposed to state law. City ordinance also tends to be easier to navigate for the enforcement officer as well. The city ordinance draft has a few common sense provisions added that are lacking in the state law. I fully support the implementation of the proposed city ordinance for bicycles. So that's, if anybody would like to see the letter, I have it here. And okay, you can have that one.
Thanks.
So that being said, you know, I'd be happy to open it up to the public. I see we have a couple of interested parties here who might want to speak, yeah?
You did mention before the meeting that you amended the definition. Could you briefly say what you wanted to do there?
Yeah, there was, so the only change that we made in our last meeting from what you have in front of you is when we defined bicycle, one of our omissions was defining it as a wheeled vehicle propelled primarily by human power, and we added by pedals. So skateboards would not be classified as bicycles.
So where does by pedals go after human?
After propelled. Propelled by pedals primarily by human power. So that's the only two words, by pedals, were the two words that were added.
Okay.
Great. That said, if there's any member of the public who would like to come forward and speak to this item, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Eli Damon, 14 Ward Avenue, Apartment B. I've already said pretty much what I had to say at the previous meetings, but I thought that if you have any questions or comments, I could respond to them.
Any questions from, well, this, go ahead, Counsel Riss.
Are you the one who petitioned? I'm just trying to refresh my memory. You're in favor of this bicycle?
Yeah, I apologize. I am the one who originally proposed the changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I don't have any questions. I think it's great.
I have actually, I have actually many questions.
Okay.
But I want to make sure all the members of the public who wish to speak to this have an opportunity to speak first before I start asking questions.
Okay, I can, I can step down.
Anyone else in the public who would like to step forward? Please do. Stay there, Dean, stay there.
Ralph Sturgeon, he lives in Elliott Street. Unfortunately, I just walked in and I missed the reading of the police chief's statement. I will reiterate my belief that the municipality should simply follow the state law and be done with it. There is apparently a belief that under home rule, that we may disagree with the state on something on which the state has already ruled. But my understanding is that that is not true. That home rule permits us to do what we want without first getting permission from the state unless the state has already ruled on it. The state has already ruled on bicycling. The state requires us to define the business district, and that's really about it. And my belief is that we should follow the state because if we don't follow the state, we're going to be out of compliance with the state, and that's it. I will be happy to entertain any further questions if anything comes up that I may speak about, but...
Okay. So any other members of the public who would like to come forward first before we start some questions? Okay, Counsel Derby?
So if I may, I'd just like to say a couple of things about that. So one of the things that we did when we went through and looked at this was we had the state law side by side with this. There's nothing in here that is out of compliance with state law. It's a couple of things where we added a little bit more restriction than state law does in wording. And as far as whether, you know, we're permitted to do that, Jack Fitzgibbon in his opinion said that we are permitted to do that. So our lawyer's opinion says that we are within our power to make this, using this wording, as, you know, this is within our purview.
Mr. President.
There are, we have two people up here. If you two would mind coming to the podium, and we'll ask if there's any members of the council who'd like to ask some questions, please come up.
I don't have any questions.
Counsel Riss, do you have a question?
Not for them.
Okay. Is there any member of the council who has any questions for the petitioners here? Thank you. Well done. Okay, Counsel, go ahead.
Did both of you attend the subcommittee meetings? I mean, did the subcommittee hear both your views? I guess...
Yes. I mean, we were not both at every meeting, but one or the other of us was, and most, both of us were at most.
I was at every ordinance committee meeting except the one last week.
Okay. So, I mean, your views were made known to the committee?
Oh, they were certainly made known.
Okay.
I, if I may speak...
Karen, please do.
That was not my understanding of the state law. That you say Jack Fitzgibbon said that we could be more restrictive. That is not my understanding of the law. Now, I'm no lawyer, but that is absolutely not my understanding of the law, that we, that the city may be more restrictive. I believe our other friend over here who chooses not to speak at the moment spoke quite eloquently at the last city council meeting that he rides through East Hampton, North Hampton, Hadley, and Amherst between home and work. And why should he have to be concerned with different laws in each place? The state should rule, and that should be it.
Okay. No one has any questions?
Thank you.
Please have a seat.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the counselor?
Counsel Derby.
Counsel Riss, do you have the floor?
Your question for me?
Yes.
Okay.
First, I wanted to say and reinforce, having been on the council a long time and having to deal with the state and state law and Jack Fitzgibbon and knowing the laws of the state, you are entitled as a home rule community to reinforce state law as well as, when you say the word restriction, I might use a different word. I might say, you've strengthened the law where they may seem weak. What you cannot do is weaken state law, because you can't do it. If state law says you can't do something, you can't say it's okay in East Hampton to do that. But you can say, well, we want to do something a little stronger than state law says.
Right.
And unfortunately, I do disagree with the gentleman. I think home rule charter allows each community to develop laws that they feel are appropriate for their community, and I like that. One size does not fit all. My question to you is, and I noted that you stated that you tried to simplify the original ordinance, which is the primary purpose of your writing, and I see a lot of strike-throughs. So I'm assuming, because you said this, and just correct me if I'm wrong, where I see all the strike-throughs of language in this, you've stated that we don't need to put this in our law, it's already in the state law. So basically, you are trying to make the state law primary in what we're doing. You've added a few things. One of them has to deal with, I'm glad to see, the rail trail and not having motorized vehicles on the rail trail. Maybe that's not in the state law. That's an example of how you have to put it there. But you've really shown in here, I see a lot of language that's been eliminated, and I like that. I think it means it's also easier, as the chief has stated, for our enforcement where the law is in East Hampton more defined, where we want it enforced. So am I correct in that?
You're absolutely correct. Thank you for clarifying that. And I just wanted to state that, I would say that probably one of, the area that you should focus on right now is Section 3.41, which is riding on the right-hand side of the roadway, which I think would be the area where, would be, I think our petitioners are probably looking more for the state language to be here. And what we did was, we, in the original, we said, "You have to ride to the right-hand side of the road, period, as practicable." And it was kind of ambiguous. And so what we did was, we clarified. So we said, "You should still ride as near to the right if you're riding in the road as possible to allow for the flow of traffic." But we wanted to add in safety concerns. So as is, so we put in, "As is safe unless preparing to make a left turn." So obviously, if you're making a left turn and you're in the road, you shouldn't be as far to the right as you can, because be cutting across lines of traffic doesn't make any sense, which wasn't addressed before. If the lane is too narrow to share safely, like Cottage Street, and there's cars parked on both sides, and the flow of traffic is pretty slow, and you have to take the lane because it wouldn't be safe for you to be riding as close to the car doors as possible. So we brought that stuff in. We clarified more. We tried to make it a little bit less ambiguous. So that was one of the areas. Again, exactly right on the man-hand rail trail. Not only did we say that you can't ride, it was already in there that you couldn't ride motorized vehicles, but we wanted to allow people who have mobility aids, like electric wheelchairs for people with disabilities, to be able to go on the bike path. And as it stood in the original ordinance, they weren't able to. And they could have gotten $125 fine. And so also, one of the things that was brought to us by a community member was an electric-assisted bicycle, which none of us had thought about. But, you know, someone who has a heart condition and can't pedal for the whole time might have an electric-assisted bicycle where if they're getting tired, they can use the electric portion of their bike. So we allowed those on there. And that was cleared through the Man-Hand Trail Committee. So there are some things in here that are more specific to East Hampton. And one of the things we also did was, you can see that in Section 3.47, we defined our downtown district. Now, state law allows for bicycles to be ridden on sidewalks outside of a defined downtown district. So we wanted to define the downtown district and not restrict people from, for example, riding on Park Street where there's no shoulder. You know, if you have a small child or a family riding on the sidewalk, it's probably not going to cause too much harm if they're riding to the bike path and they encounter someone walking their dog. Reasonable people can make that work. So we didn't want to criminalize a family that was riding to the bike path on Park Street or a street that is outside of the business district, so we could encourage people to ride their bikes safely. Another example would be South Street, right near my house. It's a very narrow street on a hill with curves going right to the bike path, to the old entrance of the bike path. And there's a very sharp curve, and if you're riding in the street, you know, and a car pulls out and there's someone coming around the curve, that could be very dangerous. But there's a nice protected sidewalk that doesn't get used that much, where a family could ride their bike on that sidewalk and be really safe and not disrupt anybody. I mean, the thing to remember is, with all of these things, someone who is unreasonable could break, could abuse, you know, for example, riding on the sidewalk. But that's going to happen anyway. People abuse the system every once in a while. People can drive terribly, too. So it's, you know, that's one of the things where we said, we actually added, you know, some restrictions to riding on the sidewalk, maintain appropriate speed for the numbers of users on the sidewalk, yield to other users, and stay to the right when you can, so to facilitate passing, that type of thing. So we actually even put some guidance in. So...
Any other questions from the councilors? Counsel Hagan?
We did receive a letter, the council received a letter, I don't know if you have it, from a Tari Street resident.
Yep.
And I just wanted to go through a couple of them. I think I know the answer to some, but just in terms of like, let's start with an easy one, 358. They're concerned about reflectors. I'm saying that the state law stays in place, is what you're saying.
State law stays in place.
So it's not like we're doing a way that you can ride with no reflectors.
No, you can't, or lights. And the state law was a little bit more restrictive than what we had. And so instead of going through and fixing all of the little things, it was very, there was a lot of verbiage. So we just decided to strike it and revert to the state law.
So the state law is...
The state law stands. It's actually more restrictive than what we had in our ordinance.
And then going back to 44, he does talk about, does ask a good question of what roads are wide enough, I guess, to ride double?
Well, unfortunately, I mean, that was actually one of the areas where we talked a lot, because, you know, when bicyclists ride abreast, it makes it difficult to pass. However, state law gives cyclists on any road the go-ahead to ride to abreast. So we couldn't weaken the state law. Does that make sense? Like Dan was saying before, we can't weaken that part of the state law. So while this, you know, this person who wrote this letter doesn't like that section, we have no power to change that. But what we did do is we added guidance to cyclists that were riding to abreast. And what we said was, and this goes a little bit beyond, a little bit more detail than the state law, and we said, "Hey, listen, if you're riding to abreast," let me see if I can find this here, riding in a group, okay, "cyclists shall allow overtaking and ride single file to facilitate safe passing on narrow roads." So we were thinking of that.
As I was saying, the state law actually says, "Nothing in the clause shall relieve a bicycle of the duty to facilitate overtaking as required by Section 2." So we just kind of further defined the state law, saying that if you're riding to abreast, you still have to allow traffic to overtake you.
As reasonable, but they do have the right to ride to abreast.
And then my final one is 47, which was my concern at the last meeting, and I did speak to Salem before the meeting about this. And again, I just want to make it clear, you're saying what you put here on 47 is just a guideline, but the state law still, to me, the state law is more restrictive. The state law says that when you allow someone to run on the sidewalk, they yield the right of way to a pedestrian, and they have to give an audible signal before overtaking. And I think that's very important, that that's somewhere or enforceable in town, because I know on North Hampton Street, it's certainly a street I think bicyclists should use the sidewalk at times. It's dangerous out there for a bicycle, but it is also very narrow. Some of those sidewalks are nine inches right on the state highway. You know, a lot of people walk it outly, and I don't think a bike should be able to come up behind them and just simply go around them to the right. I think they should make their presence known if they have to get off their bike. I mean, you're entering their territory now. I just want to make sure and be clear that we're not taking that part of the state law out, and still, people still have to yield to pedestrians on a sidewalk and give an audible signal if they're overtaking.
Right.
So this is just an additional guideline.
This is just additional guidelines. We couldn't weaken the state law. So it just gives a little bit more guidance, and yielding for a pedestrian or yielding for another user is also common sense, too, hopefully, for the user, hopefully. But then again, common sense isn't very common, so...
Any other councilors have any questions?
I do. Counsel?
I have a problem with where you were talking about riding to abreast. I just think it's too dangerous on any road to be having two bicyclists riding side by side. I mean, if you're riding side by side on Hoy Oak Street, I mean, the cars are going 35, 40 miles an hour. I think that's a little tough to, I mean, I was always told to you, "You ride single file." In, unfortunately, state law?
That's something that we'd have to take up with the legislature, because we can't change that part of state law.
State highway, too.
I have a couple of questions if the counselor is done.
Yeah.
First is, in the original ordinance, we made some footnotes on Section 3-17 where you can get a permit by the council for land owned by the city of East Hampton. Basically, it's the man-hand rail trail. For the lack of, we can't envision what's going to be there in the future, you know, if we want to hold a fundraising event or something and something along that line. That footnote was removed from this one. So that says, "No longer do we have that, the city council have that authority." That was from the original one. There was also, I'd like to note that Counsel Hagan took the wind out of my sails on a number of questions I had.
Thank you.
Because I also saw Section 3-41, and I looked at narrow or damaged roads, and I said, "Who gets to determine it? The guy riding his bicycle that instant or what?" You know, so there's, there are some little items like that that I kind of circled as we were going through. That one got answered already. That one got answered. That one got answered. I'm going to answer it, and I do have one last one, and that was, if I don't see it there, the default is state law rules.
Exactly.
Okay. Why isn't that in here?
Why isn't it stated?
Yeah.
Because it's implicit within the, state law is the law of the land, and our local ordinance is, you know, our local ordinance. So the state law supersedes, local ordinance comes underneath. And so I think it's just implicit. I don't know if we have to state it.
Mr. President. I just wanted to remind the president and everyone that this is an enforcement document used by our public safety officials to enforce locally, but they are responsible to also know what the state law is.
Yeah.
So whether we state it or not, this document is being enforced by our own police. Therefore, we don't have to worry that, the community has to know, obviously, what state law is too, but it's the police that are enforcing this. So if something is not implicit or stated in our document, it has to be reverted to state law.
Right.
So I think the document doesn't need a lot of verbiage referring to state law, is what I'm saying. Because state law has to be implied by, or has to be enforced by the city police officers as well.
And one of the things that actually came out of our meetings was potentially seeing if we can offer the law enforcement officials a training in relation to this, which has been happening more in larger cities, so that there's a clarity. Because the state law is, has been relatively new. The language is relatively new. So kind of informing the local, and I think the state might be offering some of those. I know that the petitioners offered to give trainings. So that's something that could be worked out, so there's a more clarity from the enforcement perspective. One of the things I just wanted to ask you, Justin, was the footnote that you referred to?
Yeah.
I have my copy of ordinance, and I can't find it. And I would hate to restrict the city from being able to use the bike path in a way that we thought was, so...
I'm going to find it.
I see a note that says, "See Appendix A, Article 7, Section 1.65."
Yes.
Is that, is that it?
I believe so.
Okay. So maybe that's what, and, let me see if I can, if I have that.
Appendix A, Article 7, yeah, 1.65, that's correct.
Yeah. And if that's something that's...
Sorry, that's not a footnote, so I...
If that's something that's, that we feel like we need to have in there, I'd be happy to keep that in there.
Can the clerk see this and investigate this? I'm wondering what...
You just want to add the little note about C, Appendix A? You just want to keep that little note?
Yes, because it speaks to the city council, you know, that if we want to do something abnormal that we can't predict now, that's not written here, that by permit of the city council, they can do that, you know, some type of specialized fundraising event, or you know, all the strange things that people think up over time.
I would think you could just add, you know, keep the note.
Just keep the note.
It doesn't...
Okay.
I want to make sure that the intent is that if we're going to be passing this, the intent here that's in the minutes is that that note will be replaced in because it's got taken out.
Yeah, sure. I think that's completely reasonable. And I think, you know, one last thing that I wanted to mention was that our original ordinance is, when we talked about helmet use, and this is something that I've been taking fairly, I've been diligent in noticing what's going on with helmet use in East Hampton, and I got to say, I'm fairly disappointed. And we actually had a discrepancy in the ordinance, and I'm really glad that we're fixing it, because it says, "Any person 12 years age or younger needs to wear helmet." Now, state law is 16. And I know for a fact that we have many, many kids in East Hampton that are over the age of 12 and under the age of 16 that are riding consistently around town without helmets. And I would like to just take this time to, especially with accidents in North Hampton, accidents in Southampton, the importance of protecting your head when you're riding a bicycle. My, when my son was seven, he fell off a bicycle that was standing still, and he wasn't wearing a helmet. He was just sitting over the bar, and he fell over, and he cracked his sinus. And we thought he was going to have to get brain surgery. It's no joke. When you fall and hit your head, it's not a joke. And I'm hoping that parents that are hearing this, how many of them there are, hopefully some, will be diligent and making sure that their kids are wearing helmets. And I mentioned to the chief that I would really like to see a heightened enforcement of kids that are underage being stopped and told that they need to wear their helmets, because it's just a matter of time before something bad happens here. And if we're not proactive about it, then we're complicit. So I just wanted to say that, and we fixed it. So now it's in our ordinances, 16 or younger, you need to wear a helmet. And I tell all my soccer players, and I tell all my basketball players, every time I see them riding the bike to Nantucket Park, they have to wear their helmet. Otherwise, they're going to be running laps, so...
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the counselor?
One quickly, just...
Counsel Hagan, go ahead.
Just while we're still in the public hearing thing, did you, in your discussion with the chief, how much do we enforce bicycle laws, or, again, or maybe if the, I don't want to get the mayor up, but it's still a public hearing, maybe you would know.
What he said to me was that there has, they have not had very many instances of having to enforce or having to stop people. Not very many, but there have been some.
There have been some.
Any further questions for the counselor? Okay, that's it. Counsel Derby?
Okay. I would like to move to amend the city ordinances, Chapter 3, bicycles.
That's it?
Do you want me to read all the sections?
No, just...
Reference the section.
Reference the version.
The version of July 11th, 2012 with pedals added.
And the note.
And the note added on section...
I'll second that motion if it hasn't been seconded.
Okay. Now, we have a motion on the table to recommend that Chapter 3 bicycles be amended as previously described. Is there any further comments or questions on the motion? Counsel Riss?
I just wanted to compliment the ordinance committee. This is hard work. I've been to a few ordinance where we had to work out law, and it's not perfect, but it has definitely simplified and, I think, given the police a better understanding of where we want to go with bicycle safety. And I'm glad the petitioners brought it in. Thank you for participating in government, and I think this is the way to go. It's not perfect, and I wish the to abreast issue that Counsel Ogolevitz brought up was also something we could deal with, but we can't. So at least we have something simplified here.
One last thing. I just wanted to say that the ordinance subcommittee recommended this 3-0.
Any other counselor requests?
Yeah, I would just like, again, because I've been on ordinance, congratulate the committee on an outstanding job, and also to Counsel Derby, I think you did an outstanding job defending and clarifying the work. So thank you for your work.
Thanks.
I just want to make sure, did we mention in the motion...
Counsel Ziegler, go ahead.
Thank you.
Did we make mention in the motion about Appendix A, Article 7, Section 1.65?
Yes. With the note.
That said, what I'll state is that I'm actually going to abstain. I see this as about a 90 percent solution. I have some little, a little problem, not enough to vote no, but not enough to vote yes, so I will abstain. That said, are there any further comments on this motion? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, please. Motion passes.